Good evening and welcome to the Monday, October 27th, 2025, meeting of the Norwalk High School Unified School District Board of Education. We are back from closed session. At this time, Trustee Mesquio will introduce the person who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you all for being here tonight. Today, leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance, we have another amazing lady. Ms. Natalia Valades, please come up to the podium. Natalia Valades is a social science teacher at Norwalk High School currently in her 15th year with the district. She graduated from UC Davis with Bachelor's in Political Science and Spanish and a minor in Education. Her initial plan was to work in education politics after completing her congressional internship with the former Senator John Kerry in Washington DC. We didn't know that about her, right? But got the teaching bug after working as an avid tutor. She returned to UC Davis to earn her Master's in Education and Social Science credential. Since starting at Norwalk High, she has taught Spanish, US History, AP US History, AP Government. She was the former Activities Director and Senior and Sophomore Class Advisor. She has also previously served as a school site consul. She currently teaches Government, Psychology, and AP Psychology. She is an advisor to the Psychology Club, Government Club, and mock trial team, which begins competition next week, so put it on your calendars. She serves as a teacher advisor to the early college program and helps support our 112 students in the program. She currently serves as Social Science Department Chair, representing the department at the site leadership team. She also is a member of the California Council for the Social Science Surveying on the Partnership, Development, and Government Relations Committee. She is involved in TANLA Leadership as a Site Representative, a PAC treasurer, and the organizing chair. She also loves to support the nonprofit Chicano-Latino Youth Leadership Project as an alumni of the program. She previously served as its Program Chair and Assistant Conference Coordinator, but most recently she served on its Scholarship Committee. When she's not working, she's always working. She enjoys swimming and reading. When she's not busy at school, you can usually find her at the pool swimming laps. Ah, I need someone to teach me how to swim, so I'm gonna call you up. Or curled up with a good book. Ms. Valades, once again, we thank you for the hard work and dedication you have placed towards the success of our students, and we really appreciate all you do.
Thank you so much. If you're able to, please stand. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
We can Photoshop you and Dr. Consio.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
Dr. Consio will give what announced the actions taken by the board in closed session.
Yes, there were no actions taken by the board in closed session.
All right. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of October 13, 2025?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Before we move to the adoption of agenda for this meeting, I understand staff would like to pull an item?
Thank you, President Brashov. Yes, we'd like to pull 18B, please.
Okay, so noted, 18B, as staff request to be pulled. With... Also, we will be closing in memory of three very special people. Ms. Carolyn Marie Chamberlain, Carolyn Marie Anderson, and it became Chamberlain, and Ms. Margaret Fernandez, both retired Secretaries at Norwalk High School. I knew them both. It's a big loss. They were hardworking, dedicated, loved the students, loved the job, the staff, the teachers they were working with, and really made the school a better place. And also, we also bring closing in memory of Chief Warrant Officer Bill Wolfe. Our sincere condolences to Dr. Alvarez. With those closing in memory, can I get a motion to adopt this agenda? And also with the 18B pulled?
So moved.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Public comment. Please keep your comments to three minutes. If you need a translator, we'll use just a translator. And we'll start with Ms. Bianca Reyes.
Good afternoon. President Brashov, Vice President Dr. Consio, School Board members, Dr. Baker, and guests. My name is Bianca Reyes. I'm a senior at Norwalk High School. Something that happened to me was that when I was changing for my tennis game, the girls' soccer coach walked in. I had my shirt over my eyes when I heard a man's voice walk inside the locker room. And then he got kicked out by Ms. Dominguez, who was visibly very upset about what he did. I talked to Ms. Monroe and Dr. Olaya about what happened, and they told my mom and I that everything was taken care of and that they could not disclose anything, but they never told me anything to begin with. Dr. Olaya also told me that he believed that it was a human mistake, but personally, even if it was a mistake, as a trained coach, I think that mistakes like that should not happen at school, especially going into the girls' locker room. As a coach, he should know that the girls would be changing in there to go out for sixth period, which he coaches for. He claimed that the yellow doors were slightly open, as they had to be, because tennis had to go inside to change, but an open door is not an invitation to walk inside the girls' locker room. Maybe it was a mistake, but as a person who has worked in a job before, I know that a mistake like that would have gotten me fired. Or like, I'm not even saying that I wanted him to be fired, but like, even a suspension be not just like a simple talk, because he walked inside the girls' locker room, and he could have easily, like, seen girls. Luckily, I was the only one changing in there, and I was behind the wall. But usually, I changed where he could have visibly seen me, so like, even if it didn't happen, I still think that it could have happened, and a coach should never do that, especially a guy walking into the girls' locker room. I don't understand why nothing happened to him because... Except for a warning, because I still see him practicing with the girls, so I know that nothing... He never got suspended. I always see him there. My tennis courts are right next to the soccer field, so I know that nothing happened to him, except for like a slap on the wrist, probably. But the... And the soccer coach was that easy. I don't understand why so many coaches are getting fired. For example, my cross-country coach got fired, but he was a really good coach, and my experience, or he coached me personally. And I don't believe that he did something worse than what the soccer coach did. Maybe it was a human mistake, like, I understand that too. Maybe, like, he wasn't thinking straight or something. He walked in because the doors were open, and he was looking for Ms. Dominguez. And I also don't want to ruin his, like, his job career, because I know he's also young. He's like in his 20s or 30s. But I also don't think that what he did was... Could be justified, because coaches like that get training, and I know that he was outside, because he comes in early, and for fifth period, the girls, the PE girls, were coming in to change. And about like two minutes after he came in, the PE girls started to come in to change, so he should know that there would be girls changing in there, and that the door that he would open would lead straight to the locker room. And also, his sixth period girls, they go out to train with him, and they need to change, so I feel like he would have known, and it's not justified. That's not justified. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ben Hopson?
President Brashov, Vice President Consio, School Board members, Dr. Baker, and guests. My name's Ben Hopson. I'm an eight-year teacher at Norwalk High School. I teach Science and CTE, and I have been advising the Norwalk Esports Program for the past six years. I wanted to let you know, this past Sunday, Norwalk High School Esports competed in a tournament hosted by Long Beach Community College called the Groom Cup. I am very proud to announce that our Norwalk High School students took first place.
Yeah.
And this is a milestone, not only because this is the first time an NLM school has placed first place in this tournament, but this was a collegiate-level tournament. We had to defeat LBCC, we had to get past Fullerton College and Cal State Northridge in Grand Finals. So this is a program that competes and beats college-level programs. Esports continues to grow throughout our district, with programs at every high school and interests growing at the middle school level. Thanks to the support of Norwalk Admin, District ITS, led by Mr. Andrew Rutz in the room over there, and CTE support from Dr. Jung, our program has flourished and continues to grow. And I hope to be back at a board meeting in the future this year to discuss more of the successes of esports across the district. As programs grow across our district, the staff that facilitates opportunities like that aforementioned tournaments will increase in size. Each high school is hosting practices after school in preparation for spring CIF season, currently with three stipended positions, thanks to the efforts of the TANLA bargaining team. But currently, it's not enough. The NHS program boasts 60-plus students. Glenn and La Mirada's programs, after the renovation of their computer labs, are beginning to grow and are projected to reach the same size. Coaches are monitoring equipment, keeping students practicing, and administering the rules of competition. More stipended positions are necessary to run these practices, to monitor competitions, and search for opportunities that put our students in front of college recruiters, like was done last Sunday. Athletic programs at NHS with comparable numbers of students on the roster have four stipended positions, while esports only has the three. Esports drive NHS enrollment with both a CTE pathway and an athletics program, and in time will drive enrollment across every site and the district. I'm asking that you support my push, along with the bargaining team, to add an extra stipend position for a JV assistant coach to put us on par with stipended coaches in other programs across the district. We have the chance to eclipse surrounding districts like Bellflower, Downey, and the mighty LAUSD. I'm certain that more support at the high school level will translate into more successful programs and student engagement across the secondary level. The more staff members that can be fairly compensated for their extra effort in programs like mine, the more engagement we'll get and the more success our extracurriculars will find. As esports spreads to middle schools, there needs to be a central organizing staff member. It's unfortunate that at this time, TOSES were let go, because that's exactly what we're gonna need for esports in the coming years. I hope that when the time comes, we can have an amicable conversation about a position like that and what it would entail. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Melissa Christian?
Hello, good evening. My name is Melissa Christian, and I'm a parent and a community member. And I'm here to speak in support of expanding Garden Hill Elementary to grade six through eight. We have the opportunity to strengthen our district by providing a continuity of education that many local schools, such as Beechwood and Fullerton, as well as Fisher Schools, have already proven to be both successful and sustainable. By adopting this approach, we can provide our students with a more consistent environment and the opportunity to build a stronger foundation before going to high school. Some of our students, like my son, were disrupted by the pandemic, so I believe that giving some students that opportunity or option would allow them to gain more confidence and have a more enriched environment before going on to a big transition like high school. So I would just like for you guys to consider that, so that some of our students that may need that extra support and time to transition would just have that option available to them. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Mr. Anthony Armandares?
Good evening, President, Board members, and Dr. Baker, and members of our wonderful community. On behalf of Glazier Elementary PTA, I would like to extend a heartfelt invitation to join us for our annual trunk and treat celebration on Tuesday, well, tomorrow, October 28th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., right at Glazier Elementary. This is one of the most anticipated family events of the year for the school. A fun, safe, and festive event where our students, parents, and neighbors come together to celebrate the season. There will be decorated trunks, candy, and plenty of community spirit. Our partnership means... Your partnership means so much to us, and we are truly grateful for your continued support. We would be delighted to have you join us, to meet our families, share in the celebration, and experience firsthand the wonderful community and spirit that makes Glazier Elementary such a special place. Thank you for your continued dedication to our students, families, and our schools. We also look forward to seeing you on November 5th at Southeast Academy for the Veterans Day event and to join in on the community and togetherness. Thank you. And if I may hand these out to you guys? Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Carrie Vaughn?
All right, hello, everyone. My name is Carrie Vaughn. I'm a 20-year veteran teacher of this district, currently teaching at Southeast Academy John Glenn High School. Last Friday, Southeast hosted their annual trunk or treat, which was a great time for our students and families. Additionally, Lisa Harrington and the Spooky Club built and produced an extensive maze, and it was so impressive. The level of coordination and skill was truly a showcase of the talent we are fostering at Glenn and Southeast Academy. I also appreciate Board Member Reyes and Chief Valdez for showing up to our last home football game two weeks ago. It really means a lot to see our board members at our event supporting our students. Unfortunately, I'm still standing here as a teacher, wondering why I haven't gotten any answers to my questions that I've addressed to this board and to my district administrators. I've been in this district 20 years. That's two decades. And I've watched this district slowly climb its way up through years of slow, exhausting collaborative work. And if I'm being honest, we were really making strides in building consistency and rigor district-wide. So far this year, there have been zero collaboration meetings with my district PLC. And remember, I'm the only chemistry teacher on campus, so who do I collaborate with? And why is it that teachers are spending their own time, knowing how important this is, contacting each other to work out days that we can collaborate, when our district has always prioritized this planning time and coordinated it for us? Again, my question to you, Dr. Baker, is you eliminated the system that had been working pretty well for over 10 years. What is your plan to reprioritize collaboration among teachers at the district level? Or is it no longer important that there's consistency across the district? Next, I'd like to readdress the issue I brought up last meeting about the Southeast Academy Secretary being pulled from the office to work in the Glenn Front Office. It's still happening, and it still remains a liability? I'm wondering why our only secretary is being called to fill the position, where there are multiple secretaries at Glenn that can do that? Also, I'm wondering why the district seems to be sabotaging our progress in building the John Glenn Farm. Board Member Free, I know how much you understand the value of what we're trying to do, but it feels like at every turn, the district is trying to prevent us from moving forward with demanding we pay outrageous costs for things. And then Brian Jones has spent nearly a decade to develop this program and acquire the grant money needed to make it happen. His expertise and familiarity with the grant money needed... I'm sorry. Sorry. His expertise and familiarity with the constraints of the grant are being ignored, and as a result, our plans have not yet received approval. This is unacceptable, and I'm hoping that the board can look into this issue, because we started this horticulture program two years ago. Our Cohort One are now juniors, and there's still no farm. We promised them a farm. Anyway, thank you for your time, and I look forward to communicating with you. You know where to find me. Thank you.
Thank you. I understand we have some online comments. We have one additional in-person comment here. Vanessa Armandares?
Good evening. Good evening. I wasn't planning on speaking, but I did want to invite you guys to Glazier Elementary, because we're going to have an ofrenda up. It's going up on Wednesday. So I would like to see if you guys wanted to come out and show some support. It should be up, and everything should be ready on Friday, because the kids are going to be doing like their own little frames that they're going to color and everything. And we just really want your guys' support to come out, because, you know, like, we're all the way at the end, and we would love to see you guys show up, especially like, the kids work so hard. Especially our student council. All of them are fifth graders, and just would love to see you guys come. You know, they have their own little seats and everything, and it would be great. So, that's all. I just want to invite you guys.
Thank you. Okay. President Brashov, yes, we have three virtual comments tonight. We'll begin first with Jonathan Vaie. You should be seeing a prompt to unmute yourself, and then you are good to begin your three minutes. Mr. Vaie, you're good to begin speaking.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go right ahead.
Okay, sorry about that. Hi, I'm here to discuss the district's handling.
We lost you there for a moment. Let's pause the time. Mr. Rutz? Mr. Vaie, are you still there? Do you want to start over? Can we reset it to three? Do you have any more chance?
Yep.
Go ahead and go to start over. We lost your audio there for a little.
Okay. Hi.
Sorry, we can't hear you again.
See. Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, hi. I'm here to discuss the district's handling of safety communications. On September 26th, I believe it was. I'm sorry? Someone say something? Okay, I guess not.
Good.
On September 20th... September 26th, the district sent an email saying they investigated some possible threats, and those were unfounded. However, I was sent some leaked documents, some leaked court documents by Christopher Moulton, which the entire school board knows, because when those documents were sent to me, they were all CC'd on it. And on those court documents, it stated that there was a racist 10th grader who made credible threats against Norwalk High School. He had access to weapons, and his actions were so concerning that there had to be a restraining order placed against this student, against... So he won't be able to go to any campus. That's how serious these threats were taken. But none of the public were notified of these real threats. So why is it the district notifies the community of threats that were unfounded, but when real threats occur, the district stays silent? That makes it seem like the district is more concerned with how their image is, as opposed to notifying the community if there's threats against their children? That is all.
Thank you. We'll go next to Erica Aguilar. Ms. Aguilar, if you are ready, we are ready for you to begin your comments. Ms. Aguilar, you should be able to unmute yourself now, and you should begin speaking. While we sort that, while we can go to Ms. Evelyn Acevedo. Ms. Acevedo, if you are ready now, we can... You can unmute your mic, and you can begin your comments.
Thank you. Good evening, Superintendent, Board members, District staff, parents, and community. I would like to take a moment to express my gratitude to Board Member Ms. Norma Mesqua for taking time out of her busy schedule to attend the La Mirada City Council meeting for the Down Syndrome Awareness Month proclamation. It was such a wonderful and meaningful surprise to see her there showing support for our families. This truly means a lot to our community. I also want to thank her for attending the October CAC meeting and for listening to parents' concerns. Feeling heard and supported makes such a big difference for families like ours, and we really appreciate her presence and care. As a reminder, everyone is welcome to attend our CAC meetings. They are a great opportunity to learn shared resources and be part of the conversation supporting our students. Our next CAC meeting will be on December 18th at 9:00. And you can find the house on the district website. I would also like to share about our local parent-led support group called We All Belong. This group brings together families of children with and without extra needs. We meet in La Mirada to connect, share resources, and build a community where every child and family feels they belong. You can also follow us on Instagram at WeAllBelong21 for updates on our upcoming meetups. Thank you again for your continued support and for helping make our schools and community places where everyone belongs. And happy Down Syndrome Awareness Month. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll circle back to Erica Aguilar. Ms. Aguilar, if you can hear us, you can unmute, and you can begin your comments. President Brashov, she's in the room, but she's not unmuting her mic. If you're able to hear us, go to... If you're able to hear us, go to unmute, and you can start. I don't believe that she's unmuting right now, so we can reach out to her and get her comments and forward them to the board if you'd wish. President Brasov. Yes. If you can hear us, go ahead and please, uh, reach out. We do want to hear you, but we will move on. At this time, we have the Parent Teachers Association report, and there is no report. Next is the CSEA report, Ms. Hauri.
Good evening, President Brasov, Vice President Dr. Consio, Superintendent Dr. Baker, Board Members, guests in the audience, and guests in our YouTube channel. I want to start off by, again, you know, doing my report. So this month, we kicked it off with our chapter meeting on October 19th. And in our chapter meeting, we had three guests, Tanya Magana, that came in and attended a chapter. And thank you for, again, for the wonderful bund cakes you brought to our chapter. They were very yummy. Board Member Rebecca Langenwalter, thank you for coming and saying hello to Chapter 404. It's really nice to see, to see our board members to come and say hello. So thank you for, for your attendance. And also, of course, our, our partner, Schools First, Joshua Borrego, always teams up with our school district, and he is my partner every Tuesday at CSEA Orientation. So we work together in collaboration. So Schools First is one of our biggest, you know, partner that we team up with. So again, thank you for, for them attending our chapter. On October 23rd, I attended the College and Career. Joanne Jung, like always, puts on a great presentation and then bringing all of these vendors and everybody on there, our community, our students, and of course, our staff. So that was, that was very nice to attend. We finally kicked off. On October 24th, we opened our negotiations. So we have just a lot of work that we need to do, but a full day of activity. Some challenges that we are facing, but nevertheless, we will take care of, and we will work with our process and working in collaborations with our HR department and our district leadership. And I'm also looking forward on October 29th, since there was an invitation put in the box for CSEA to attend the Dia de los Muertos over at Los Alisos. So I'm looking forward to in attendance to that coming up. And I'm sure it's going to be a great event to attend to. It'll be my first one attending this school year. Now I'm going to go on to my areas of concern, like always. So about a month and a half ago or so, Five Star was brought up. And Five Star is a program that is being utilized in all of our schools, especially El Camino and all of our high schools. Again, I'm visiting campuses, and if we are going to have a program or a software where our employees are going to be using this software, they should be provided with either an iPad, a Chromebook, or a device and not their cell phones. So I'm addressing this matter again because no employee should be using their cell phones for something that is bringing additional working conditions, and so I keep emphasizing it. And if the employees are having these conversations with their prospective supervisors, then there should be conversations with CSEA and, you know, elaborating into a better and further process so that there's a clear understanding. So again, this has been going on for a while, and I, I really, really want to see a change with this process. No cell phones should be used from our classified employees to conduct business with Five Star. So I want to bring that to your attention. In our last board meeting, I have emphasized and brought to your attention how, you know, we are constantly struggling with a lot of vacant positions, especially our part-time positions. And every Friday, there's an email sent from our HR department, and they send us a listing of all the vacancies. And as you can see, like always, I do my homework, make my notes, I do what I need to do. I do hold standing meetings weekly with HR. And the week, the meetings are to ask questions, have conversations, have resolutions. What are we going to do to mitigate some of these problems? You know, we keep, we keep having conversations, and it's fine to have conversations, but how many times are we going to have conversations, but there is no action put in place or a plan that needs to be put in place? We need to really emphasize hiring the classified employees that are going to come in here to do these positions. SPED program is a large program in this district. We all know that. Our students that hold IEPs, 504s, and other needs that they have need to have these employees to better support their, their programs and their needs. We are very short-staffed in that area. Yes, we do have outside agencies. I'm aware, I am in support of that because of, you know, the amount of vacancies that we have. Again, you know, Martha, we're going to talk to you, we're going to bring this to your attention, we're going to do this, we're going to do that. I want to start seeing the do that. I really need to see it because it is critical when I am visiting sites and I'm getting complaints from employees that they cannot perform their duties for various reasons. And it is very critical and important that you, as board members, understand how important it is that I think that in order for this program to be successful, to support the needs of our students, we need to really bring in six-hour positions to support that. These three hours, 3.5 hours, it's not working. The agency sometimes, instead of sending paraeducators, we're getting LVNs. We're not requesting LVNs. We need paraeducators, we need healthcare providers. We have students that have very intense needs, and sometimes these employees outside from agencies are not properly trained. They don't understand the need, they don't understand the scheduling, and everything that involves to support the need of a student. So it is important that I am going to continue to emphasize this until there's a change with this process. If it needs to go to the table to negotiate, I welcome it, bring it on. That's what we're here for. But, you know, we can't be having conversations with no actions behind it. And for CSEA, it is extremely important. So wanted to address that. And finally, my last item, I'm going to be a broken record until I see an action in place. As you all know, Tana has been addressing it. I've been holding conversations with district leadership in regards to the work of the technology literacy coach. And, you know, in front of me, I have a job description, and it literally talks about the work that they were doing for the last 10 years or so. And I'm going to tell you that we are impacting our students and teachers, but yet this workflow is now falling under classified. And if it's going to be falling under classified, I want to understand why we're not having these conversations. I'm very disappointed that every time this subject comes up, and I'm asking for a meeting so that we can have resolution to support the needs in all of our campuses, there's always a cancellation, or we will get back to you, or we're working on it. The dismissal of these employees happened this past summer. We're going to start November, and we have yet to have resolution. So why are we not putting this process in place? Why are we not hiring the staff that is needed? Temporary solutions are just temporary solutions. Offering overtime to a department is not a solution. So I'm letting you know, I'm very open and transparent. You know that about me. I will be submitting info requests because at this point, when we talk about transparency, I'm not getting it. If I provide transparency and an open communication or conversation, regardless of the matter or the, or the topic, I expect that back, and I'm not getting it. It's not fair, it's unprofessional, and there's a lot of lack of communication when it comes to this subject. It's, it's not a secret, it's been put out there, but when my membership reach out to me and have disclosure of lack of communication, or we don't know what's going to happen. For example, there, at the last couple of board meetings, there's about 200 tickets outstanding. Currently speaking, the number provided for me, there now there is 133 tickets outstanding. So you're going to tell me that since the last board meeting, offering overtime, you couldn't drop this down to even less tickets outstanding? I want to know why. But yet, there's no conversations. So I started this conversation in early August. To be exact, on August 20th, with HR and the Chief of Technology and two employees. Then on September 12th, there was also an additional conversation in regards to that to see how we were going to mitigate the job discretion and increase of pay if needed. And most recently, a meeting was canceled on October 20th that there was supposed to be a conversation with CSEA. Until this date, I'm still waiting. So as you can see, there's a lot of frustration throughout the district in regards to this matter. We should not have to wait another 30 days or to the end of the school year to have this resolved. We shouldn't. And I want to also add to that. Our TSTs are very important to this district. These employees are dispersed at every school. In the last eight years, there has been about, about eight of them that have resigned and left this district for better opportunity, for better pay, and better working conditions in other districts. Most recently, one of our own from John Glen just left to Rio Hondo to pursue a, a better career because the work continues to get dumped on and dumped on and dumped on. But yet, there's no improvement with a better salary and retention from Norwalk La Mirada Unified School District. That's a union that is very disappointing to hear. So how many more employees are we going to continue to, to, to lose because we cannot offer attractive contracts and better paying salaries? And to value and validate the hard work. We all know that technology is getting bigger and wider. A lot of software, a lot of technology, a lot of, a lot of everything is coming in. But yet, what are we doing to make it better? Why are we allowing these amazing men and women to leave? Regardless if they are TSTs, regardless if they're teachers, regardless of whoever, doesn't matter. Why are we allowing them all this knowledge and experience to leave? And why are we not having a process and a plan in place to mitigate this issue? I have a lot of questions, but I have these questions for the district leadership. But until I get the next meeting, maybe I will have some of these questions answered. And maybe on the next board meeting or the following board meeting in December, maybe I can come up here and give you good news about this. I've been patient, and I think I've been waiting long enough. The work is not going anywhere. The work is stuck somewhere. And there's got to be some type of an accountability from the top all the way to the bottom. Because from this summer till now, I'm still here, Tana's here, teachers are addressing it, students are not getting what they need. You know, it's just not right. Not right. So I hope that the next board meeting, I can have better responses and say thank you for listening and thank you for making a difference. There's got to be a difference with this process. That's all I have to say, and happy Halloween.
Thank you. We will now hear from Tana.
School Board Members, Superintendent Dr. Baker, administrators, colleagues, and guests. Our deepest condolences to the families of the two Norwalk High School Secretaries, as well as Bill's family and our beloved Tana Retired Member Kathy Alvarez, who are very sorry for your losses. I would also like to thank, to extend my heartfelt congratulations to our Tana member Natalia Valades on being honored this evening in recognition of her exceptional dedication, hard work, and service to the students and families of our district. Thank you, Norma, for recognizing that. College and Career Expo. Tana participated in the College and Career Expo held at John Glen High School, my alma mater, last week. Go Eagles! This event was a wonderful opportunity to connect with our Norwalk La Mirada Unified Students and encourage them to explore careers in education. It's always inspiring to see students' enthusiasm and curiosity as they consider their futures, and we were proud to represent the teaching profession as a meaningful and rewarding career. Membership Engagement and Professional Development. In partnership with CTA, we hosted our first virtual training of the school year focused on school-side council roles and responsibilities. The session was well-attended and provided valuable information and resources for members serving on their school-side councils. Our participants asked thoughtful questions about how to ensure that meetings are productive and inclusive, and we were encouraged to see their strong commitment to serving their schools effectively. In the spirit of connection and membership engagement, we're also looking forward to our annual Halloween Costume Contest, a fun Tana tradition that brings some joy and creativity to our members' busy fall season. Meetings with School Board Members. Tana's executive board members have been meeting with each of you individually. Most of these meetings have already taken place, and a few are still to be scheduled. These conversations are an important way to strengthen our collaborative relationship with the board and to discuss issues that impact both our educators and our students. We truly appreciate those of you who have taken the time to meet with us. Your continued support of our educators, who work directly with students every day, is essential to maintaining a healthy and successful district. Collaboration and Follow Through. I also want to take a moment to speak about the importance of follow-through and authentic collaboration within our district. While the district has set forth goals, there continues to be a noticeable gap between plans and actual implementation. There is often a lack of coordinated action behind them. When questioned about this, the answers are vague, and no concrete plans or actions are shared. Recently, there have been shifts in duties and responsibilities among district leadership. While we understand that change can sometimes bring new opportunities, these transitions should have been carefully planned and completed during the summer months, well before the school year started. When organizational changes happen abruptly, the impact is felt directly in our classrooms. We are still awaiting updates on when the superintendent's cabinet will reconvene, reconvene to provide guidance and direction. With the first LCAP report due soon, it's crucial that we ensure appropriate follow-up and support in key instructional areas, such as reader-by-nine and balanced literacy training. This committee is the ideal venue for collaborative problem-solving, but increasingly, it feels as though decisions are made from the top and shared only after the fact, with no interest to have input from our members. Tana remains open to collaboration and transparency. However, true collaboration means more than simply having meetings. It means engaging in honest, two-way dialogue where all voices are heard, respected, and considered in decision-making. We are, after all, supposed to be a shared decision-making district as stated in our master agreement. Collaboration is not holding meetings to share information or just to check a box. When concerns are raised and dismissed, or when defensiveness replaces dialogue, we lose opportunities to solve problems together. Tana continues to believe in the power of authentic collaboration, where we analyze data together, problem-solve as partners, and reach consensus on what truly serves our students the best. This is the kind of collaboration our educators and our community deserve. Bargaining. Turning to bargaining, we held our first session this past week. Tana came prepared with thoughtful proposals designed to improve teaching and learning conditions for both educators and students. Unfortunately, the district did not present any monetary offer and appeared unwilling to engage in substantive discussions. With our reserve sitting above 21.5%, yes, 21.5%, when the required reserve is only 3%, we expected the district to come with a meaningful offer. Many of our proposals, which directly impact classroom conditions, were dismissed. It is concerning that the district appears content to maintain the status quo on issues that clearly affect our schools. Our members have been patient and professional, but we expect a more meaningful level of engagement and progress this year. With only five sessions scheduled over the next two months, we are not confident that this process is currently moving at a pace that will lead to a that will lead to a timely settlement. Tanla remains steadfast in our commitment to advocate for fair compensation, reasonable working conditions, and the resources teachers need to focus on what matters most: our students. We are hopeful that as negotiations continue, the district will join us in prioritizing collaborative solutions that strengthen our schools and support the dedicated educators who make them thrive. Thank you, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Dr. Baker will give us a superintendent's report?
Thank you. Good evening, board members and members of the community. I'm super excited about the way forward. We are in the process with this upcoming board meeting on November 17th of really taking a close, close look in our first quarter about, we're looking at our data during Quarter 1. And during that opportunity, during that time, there's going to be some extensive reporting out of progress. And part of that is going to include early literacy. And so we're looking forward to the board members and the community having full access to that information. It's always very, very important prior to deciding to continue with initiatives or to expand initiatives. It's important to know where we are, right? Nobody buys a house before they know how much money they have in the bank, right? And so we want to make sure that we're sober about the progress that we've made, but also that we take a really, really close look at where we are in the areas of early literacy, where we are in the areas of how many ninth graders have Ds and Fs, right? I'm not sure if the district in the past have looked at, has looked at that type of data. We also have some operational data, human resources and budget data. And so the goal of our quarterly reports, and again, mark your calendars, November 17th, I hope that many of you will either log on or come and sit in the room with us. We'll have copies and electronic copies for everybody. But the goal of the data, the Quarter 1 data reports, and we're going to do one every quarter. The goal is for us to be able to understand where we are in time to progress monitor. We are not using data to weaponize it against anybody. And so this week, we're going to be having a meeting, virtual meetings, with principals and directors. We'll have one that's at 7:30 in the morning as an option, or if you prefer, a 4 o'clock virtual meeting. And those meetings are basically going to be information sessions for principals. We've been working on this for several, several months. And the goal is for principals to have access to what we call an editable PowerPoint presentation about their school, right? Understanding where your school is in several areas academically, operationally, and fiscally. The second thing that principals are going to receive is called a technical data guide. Sometimes people will get data, and they'll try to make a lot of assumptions about what it means and whose fault it is and who caused it. So we have a technical data guide that explains what the data mean and what they do not mean, right? Some, there are some data points you can't look at it and say, "This is the initiative that improved that," or "This is the person that did that." That's not what the data is going to be able to tell us. What the data is going to be able to tell us and what the technical guide is going to be able to show us is exactly what the data point means and what it doesn't mean and how it was calculated. It's an informational text. So principals are going to get their PowerPoint presentations, they're going to get a technical guide. They're also going to have a data file, an Excel sheet. That means that they cannot just get the information in a PowerPoint. They're going to be able to drill down to the student, to the teacher, to better understand who needs support and how that works. Now, I've already, we've been working on this for quite a while, which, again, it's a massive undertaking. So I've communicated with the board on a regular basis. It's such a massive undertaking. We have 15,000 kids, you know, and a large budget and thousands of staff. So this has been a huge undertaking. We're excited about it. Again, the goal is not to weaponize data. So I'm having these conversations. I had a conversation with both of our bargaining unit leaders to make sure that they're aware it's coming, but also we have a sit-down prior to the presentation, so they get a snapshot of what it looks like. And the goal is for us to, again, have the presentations, have the data guide, but also have the data file. And then from there, we're also going to be able to share what we call sort of an academic audit inventory, right? Because there are a lot of conversations about initiatives that everybody thinks worked, right? And I'm not here to say it didn't work. What I am here to say is, here's what we have, here's where we are, and here's where we'd like to go. And then from there, we're going to make sure we have parents, teachers, administrators involved in the process. So the goal with Quarter 1 is just to be able to show where we are. My goal is not to go after historically any staff member. We have some gaps in some areas. It's not one person's fault, right? But there are some gaps in some areas that are, it's a very objective thing. So I'm going to be able to show exactly where we have some really strong built-out systems, academically and operationally, and where we need some work, right? And my goal is not to say, "This is what we're doing right this second." That's not the goal. Because first, we have to come to terms with where we are, and that's a process. So I'm going to be able to share that with you all, November 17th. Again, I want to invite everyone to come out. There are going to be a series of meetings, one-on-one sessions prior to that. But we are super excited, again, meeting with principals this week. And then we're going to do our one-on-ones on every single school with principals, both Ms. McGonaghy and myself. We will be meeting with every single principal individually. We're meeting individually with the bargaining unit leaders. We're meeting, I always do my one-on-ones with, with board members, and we'll go through that. And then we'll do the public presentation, November 17th. So I'm going to plug that again, November 17th. I want you to log on, be in the, be in the room, and we'll have electronic copies for everyone. And again, the goal is just to say, "Here's where we are." The goal is not to paint a broad brush about it being anyone's fault, but there are some celebrations too, and we're going to, we're going to share those as well. So presentation, data file for principals, and then a data technical guide. And when you see the work, and we won't be able to do the presentation, we won't be able to do all of the schools, right? But you will have access to the information. We're going to do a district-level view and maybe do some highlights on each school. When you see the amount of work that's gone into this with the team, you'll know that this is really about student progress and how we do work together. But before we start working together and doing certain things, because everyone has their own perspective about what worked and what didn't, we really just need to be sober about where we are, and I think it's okay to do that. And so that's the goal. And my goal with the academic audit inventory is to show where, what we have in terms of instructional materials, and where I can show you there are some gaps. Again, no one's fault, but it does exist. And we need to be sober about that in order to come together and move forward. And so with that said, again, I think it's a good starting point, and we're getting as many folks involved as we can. We are doing the one-on-ones, which are going to be really important for folks to ask their questions. And then for the public, we'll, we'll be sharing that information on the 17th. The data file, we are, we're, again, we have to protect student rights and all of that good stuff. So that is only going to principals. So we're not going to be sharing that data file publicly. But we are sharing the presentations, and we'll have the technical guide available for, for everyone. So with that said, I am now going to turn it over to Mr. Chris Hargraves, who's going to share a video about our Students with Special Needs and the Individual Educations Act.
Superintendent's report.
Thank you. We're onto the consent agenda, which has items of 10 through 19. Would any board member like to pull any item? Oh, I'm sorry. I did, I did skip that. Thank you. Appreciate that. I'm sure facilities would love to, I should do number nine, the Measure G. Measure G, items A through C. We're going to do that together as a, as a unit. Can I get a motion?
I make a motion?
I'd like to pull.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I'd like to pull 9A.
9A. Okay, so we'll pull 9A. So on 9B and C, can I get a motion on 9B and C?
Some more.
A second.
Okay. All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. On item 9A, we'll need a motion in a second to discuss. Can I get a motion on item 9A?
I make a motion.
So moved?
A second.
All right. Go ahead.
Estuardo, I know we spoke earlier on this item. Can you please help me understand it a little bit more? It's a resolution to delegate authority to approve change orders, approve subcontractor substitution requests, and conduct subcontractor submission hearings, and approve contracts, amendments, or other changes to professional services contracts related to Measure G, Phase 1A, 1B, 1C, 1D, and 1E projects, and to supersede prior resolutions. So this would delegate all authority to the superintendent?
Sure. This resolution supersedes the one that was approved back in 2023. And basically what it says, the biggest change on the resolution, and if you see the one that is attached on the agenda, we added Project 1E. So on the same sentence, you see 1A, 1B, 1C, 1D. So the difference on this new resolution is we had to add all the projects on the 1E. This is the project that you approved a few months ago, because we're doing the roofing, around $80 million, and we're doing the transportation gas tank. Okay, that is around $2 million. Basically, what it does is, if we are in the middle of construction and we need to fix something else, then we just cannot be waiting for another PO to run through the board. We, we act on the, on the repair, but the PO will eventually come up under this section because every time we spend something on the bond, it has to be on the agenda. The remaining sample is, I'm talking about 9B right now, 9C. We're spending like $70, $75 or some kind of fee, and those items are here. This, this resolution authorized the superintendent to move forward with those change orders, increase on contracts, things like that, because we are really working on, on the project, and then we don't delay the project until we get the, until we get the approval. For example, if we need to get an approval on, on a PO, then we would have to wait almost two or three weeks by the time we bring it to the board. That means that the project will have to stop. But if I already have a contract with a contractor that is supposed to finish the work in 100 days, if I make him stop, I still owe them some monies, but nothing is happening. So this resolution allows, not allows, gives authority to superintendent. Superintendent gives me authority to me, and then so we keep, we keep moving forward all these projects. That, that's basically what this resolution does. And we've done this since, since Phase 1A, almost 10, 12 years ago. And it only talks about bond items. So for example, 1E talks about roofing and the tank. I just cannot go and build a parking lot because this is strictly for the bond on the approved projects.
And how often has this happened in the past?
Well, it happens on and off. I mean, sometimes if, if they bring a wall down, I really would not be able to tell you that this is on a daily basis, because it's not. But if he, but when somebody, it was unforeseen that we had to fix, then we just cannot leave half of the room empty and move to the next one. Because, you know, we, we, we had to fix it.
And so altogether, we're talking about $100 million that we're dealing with right here?
No, the Phase 1E is $20 million.
Okay.
So when we come back in December, I'm sorry, in, 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 in November, we're going to be bringing the official documents, but, but the limit that we can sell is $20.
Right, but what's, I think she, I think what my colleague is also asking is, what's the total left? Which, if I'm correct, is 120 odd million.
Oh, that's okay. You mean the, the balance for Measure G?
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah. I was referring about the specific project on 1E is only $20 million.
I know that usually most of the time, and there has been some items where you've had to call us and so that you can make those decisions, you know, "Hey, can I go forward with this?" And I've always been available. I just don't understand how we, we could just be excluded from these types of decisions.
You are excluded because we are in the middle of the project. And then because these projects have been approved by you. The example that, the example that you're talking about is that if, I think the last time was Excelsior High School, where I think something happened to the electrical system, but the repair was going to, was going to be over $150,000. Now, at that point, I'm going to be bypassing some bidding processes. So on that one, I have to call all of you one by one because I really cannot open up a PO to start those repairs because when it's time to make a payment to the contractor, then the county oversees our operations. But then the county will see that expenditure that is going over the bid limit, and the first question will be, "Do you bid it out?" Then my, my answer will be, "No," because I'm, I'm going on the, on emergency situation and I have the, I have the verbal approval from the board. And then the, and that will go into the next board agenda, and I can use that as a backup so I can pay the vendor that actually made the repair.
Her question is, is it possible to have that process for these things as well?
Well, anything is possible, but it will delay all the projects.
By how, how long? I mean, obviously, delays always happen when you have construction projects. I mean, all the time. That just happens all the time. But how, how much do you foresee a delay if then we, as the board, grant this total authority to the superintendent to make the decisions?
So can I interject for a second? The question is how long, and I don't know that you can foresee that. But the 20 million that was approved for these projects, the board has already approved, correct? Okay, so you all have already approved the 20 million. What Estuardo is saying is, when he has to move forward in a project, he, if you're asking him to stop the project and call seven board members each time there needs to be a contractual shift or change, there's no way for Edith and the team to finish a project on time. Because he will, yes, you're available every second we call you, but that's not the case for the seven. And so you're asking the entire team, the facilities' construction team, to call seven people to get approval on things that you've already approved. So you've already approved the 20 million project. What he's saying is, there will be times when he will need to move forward. If you grant that authority, it still comes to the board, but he's not talking about the 120 million left. It's only the 20 million you've already approved. And so this has been standard for our district for the last decade. This is not a new process. It's what typically happens in school systems because of that. You will delay projects. They will not get done on time if he's got to call seven people for approvals to move forward on pieces. And he can't really project exactly how often that will happen because, to your point, it is construction. So I just wanted to plant that seed. I hope we're not moving in a direction where, you know, staff have to call seven folks every time they need to move forward in this space. That's going to be incredibly cumbersome for the project being delivered on time. And typically, if you can deliver on time, it will be more expensive, right? Because folks are just going to have to wait till a board meeting.
Mr. Rios?
Yeah. Well, this is a Measure G, something that we went out and asked the constituents to approve. And if we just start loosening up the money, just, you know, when we come back and ask for something, what kind of accountability are we, as the board, having to control or to say? Or to even go ask them, hey, please, we need it. Let's, you know, we're about that time, I think, we're probably going to have to be looking at asking for another bond. And as long as we stay, I don't see the problem of waiting because we have, and we've done, and, you know, it's been called. I think, I mean, I know I try to answer most of the time, sometimes, you know, like today I did, but most of the time, I know when I see something from either Estuardo or Mr. Gado, I know that it's more efficient that they need me right then and then versus sometimes, you know, I can get back with Dr. Baker. But, you know, a few months ago, we had discussed about it, bringing up a bond. Maybe six months ago or so when we've been talking about it, I had people from the community who do listen and come out and, hey, well, you guys haven't even finished the other bond, and this hasn't been done. And I believe that, in my point of view, that it's just, it's more than just us here now. I mean, people have agreed to give us their money because we agreed to do certain things. We gave them something as of, oh, we're going to build stadiums, we're going to do this, we're going to put that up, you know, we're going to do infrastructure, we're going to do technology, which we did. If it wasn't for the technology during COVID, our kids wouldn't have had an iPad. I mean, we were on top of that, and thanks to Measure G. And I think if we start tweaking and turning things, we're going to lose the trust of the community.
We've also all made a commitment to be available for these types of decisions as well.
That's how I feel about it. And yeah, I think it's something that the community does see. And they do say, oh, where's the money, you know, how much money you guys got left? What's going on? I see this has been done over here. They like, you know, they're observant, you know, just because they're not here or they're not, you know. And I'm just afraid that, I mean, if we go, we've been going to be going against Cerritos College, they've been getting, probably I think, every other election or pretty much every election, they've been getting something. And the community has been generous. But it comes to a point where we have to be, we have to let them know that what we're doing is, we're up here and we're making the right decisions and correctly watching the expenditures, watching, you know, obviously, everything else comes in under it, you know, as far as showing our grades or math, everything else falls under it. But I just think it's a way of showing that we're willing to do whatever, you know, and use that money up just how we want to. That's how they're going to look at it. They're not going to look at it as, oh, are you going to have to wait, or it's going to be a little bit more expensive? Or they're not going to look at it that way. They're going to look at it, oh, well, where's that money going to go? How am I going to see it being approved? And although I know it'll come after the fact, it's like putting the carriage in front of the horse, you know, who's going to pull it? And that's why I think that, that's how I see it. And then, yeah.
Thank you. Any other comments? Ms. Lingwalter, I'm sorry, go ahead, Ms. Rios.
I just want to say also, it keeps those checks and balances in place as well, you know, and you maintain that trust of the community and all the other stakeholders. I mean, there's so many. So I think that it's just really important to always do, go on the side of transparency. And so that's just my take on that.
Thank you. Ms. Lingwalter?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask Estuardo, I mean, surely there are limits, right? Like, if you're out there, you're grading for a new playground, you break a pipe, you have to repair it before you go on with the immediate thing. So when, does it work out that when you hit 20 million, that's what we approved? Then you would have to, you know, basically stop and get more money, more approval from us? Or, I mean, this isn't just an open wallet situation, is it?
Yeah, no. And then, since we're talking about transparency, the limit is $20 million here on the projects. So the $20 million, not the 20, the $80 million for the roofing, I want to be broken down on the sites that really need it. So we'll be back in November 17 to share with you which sites and which are like the older roofs that kind of need to be replaced. That's what we have in the discussion here in public. And this will not exceed $20 million. This is not what this resolution is all about. All these projects are going to be in roofing this coming summer. We're probably going to start at the end of May, early June, and they will have to be done probably by the end of August, early September. Because if the roofs are not done, we cannot let anybody come into the classrooms. And one thing is just replacing the roof. Most of these buildings are original buildings. We're talking from the '70s. And then, and we are even planning that we're kind of expecting some of the roofs. We're not just going to be replacing the roofs. We're going to have to fix some of the beams and some of the walls that will sustain the new roofs. So there's going to be a lot of changes as we go on the 10, 14, 15 schools that we do. We have a limit because you already gave us a limit, what to spend on, and the roofings are $80 million. Now, if something would happen, as Ms. Lingwalter just said, there is no way that I can go over the $20 million because we will only have $20 million on the bond. I just cannot go and grab another five because in order for me to sell more bonds, we'll have to be three and a half years from now. So this is the limit on 1E is only $20 million.
And even though it's only 20 million, 20 million is a lot of money.
True.
And, I mean, I passed by, I was in the area by our preschool site, Ramona, and I saw the roof there. And that's exactly what I wanted to take a look at. And I saw the condition of that roof, and it's very visible to the community that, obviously, it needs to be worked on. And with the roofs, I understand, you know, the wood and the walls and all of that. I'm very familiar with that. But I still think that 20 million, although we say it's only 20 million, 20 million is a lot of money that the community has entrusted us with.
And then you're right. We've been audited every single year, and we have complied with the bond since day one. There has never been a findings on misuse of funds or amounts over spent. And I completely agree with your viewpoint. This was a tool that would allow us to move the project faster and then forward. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lingwalter?
No, I think the point's been made that we approved 20. We actually had input on how that 20 is going to be divided up, 18 million on roofing. $2 million, maybe that's the fuel tank that we need to replace because it's leaking. That even though if we were to pass this, facilities would be able to, you know, do minor redirects here and there as things occur in construction. But you hit 20 million, that's it. We already decided how that 20 million would be spent. So I don't know, I mean, when I read it, I had the same reaction. Whoa, this is almost like this is giving facilities our decision, but that's not actually what this says. It's only for the 20 million we already approved and divided up and allocated. So.
Well, on a point of clarification, it's projects, you know, A through E. So are we done with A through D?
Yeah.
Completely?
With the prior projects all done.
Okay, so there's nothing pending with that. I mean, now, because all we have is 20 million.
Well, we're probably going to close them, but then construction itself is done, so we're just focusing on 1E now.
Okay, but the resolution includes all of them. I think that's the.
Well, that's because we had to mention all of them since the beginning. But then it's not that we're going to go back to a project in 1A. This only is specifically, that's why we added 1E specifically for 1E because you gave us authority under 1E, the roofings and then the tank.
Thank you. Mr. Rios?
I guess my, and since we already approved the 20 million, my, the wording here, I would, I would want it to say, the $20 million you already approved.
It also makes it seem that you just want to, there's a lot of changes that are taking place here. Delegate authority, approve change orders, approve subcontractor substitution requests, conduct subcontractor substitution hearings, and so on and on. It's like, they're still so, like, you know, we've already approved it, you know, we've gone out to the market, right? You've got your proposals, but now it just seems that, you know, changes are going to be made.
Yeah, but those are the changes that really happen in construction. It's almost no different that if I hire a company to cut my trees, if they're not performing, I'll go get another company. And then even though it talks about change orders, changes, plumbers, work quotas, things like that, it's because that happens during the course of the construction. And then if I need to change a vendor within the contract that I can, then we'll get somebody else to do it. You probably don't remember this, but then on Phase 1A, we have, when we were modernizing Guiding Hill, the general contractor, the ones doing the modernization, they walked away 10 days before they completed the work. So we had to get somebody else.
Thank you. Ms., do you have anything to say? Ms. Scott?
Well, for me, I've been here a long time, and I really trust Edith. I think she knows what she's doing, and I do understand that it's a lot of money in place, and we have to respect that. I do trust the judgment of the people that are putting this together, and I believe that they're doing the right thing. They have to come to us, and they do come to us. I've been here a very long time. And there are times even I don't pick up. And if it's urgent and it needs to be done, it has to be done. There's no, I was a director of programs, and sometimes they would have to call me right, maybe at 10 at night, and I had to make a decision. If a plumbing issue was at a center, I needed to make that decision at that moment. I couldn't call my boss and say, hey, if she didn't pick up, what was I going to do? The plumbing needed to be done. So I do understand, and I really trust Edith's judgment. She's the one that's putting this report together. She submitted it, and I'm going to say that I'm okay with it.
Thank you. Dr. Vidal, do you have any comment?
No, I too agree with Edith and the leadership and Mr. Santian as well. And he also mentioned the audits, and we've come, I mean, the results have been good in the audit as well.
Thank you. And Dr. Consio?
Yeah, thank you. I agree with Mr. Rios and Ms. Espy. I think this is the purview of the board, and as much as I probably don't like homework like the next board member, you know, this is our job, and, you know, we have to do it. We've been working, and normally, you're right. You know, our time here on the board, it's always, we've received calls from district leadership if there needs to be an immediate decision. And look, I mean, I'm a couple states away, and I'm still here. You know, every board member is committed to this. Every board member, even if we're busy, we come back, and then we're doing our job, and we're being as diligent as possible because we take this serious. So I think when it comes to this line item, I do agree with Mr. Rios and Ms. Free. You know, it's not about not trusting anyone because we receive reports and we approve items that come from district leadership and other members of our district. But this is really our job, and so I'd feel more comfortable continuing doing my job. And if you have to call me, then call me. And if you need my vote, you're going to get my vote, whatever that vote may be. So, you know, I think that it doesn't matter if it's $1, $20 million, or $100 million. At the end of the day, the buck stops at the board, and the board has the oversight. And so I don't feel comfortable giving away board oversight outright to district leadership. And it's not a matter of trust, it's a matter of duty and role and, you know, our job. Yeah, I agree. Good points.
Thank you, Dr. Consio. Sorry. Yeah, when I first read this, I was likewise perturbed. Thought, well, I don't want something that's an abdication of our role. And, but, had a chance to discuss this with Mr. Santian and Dr. Baker, and the kinds of decisions that are, you know, if you look at 1C that we just approved, they had to wait till this board meeting to approve $75 to file the SEQA fee. Combined with 1B, you know, 1.2 million, 1.25 million. So from 75 bucks to 1.25 million, it's quite a big gap here. These are, you know, that's not part of 1E, you know, 1E, this Jensen Middle School thing for 1C and 1B. But those are the kinds of decisions that, you know, slow down. Yes, I view our job as oversight because I was equally perturbed, and I really had to think about this one. Our job is oversight to come up with the projects, to make sure it stays within that project. But as to, you know, which excavator to get, which, you know, we pay them to go down 15 feet. No, there's solid rock there. We got to pay somebody else to blast through that rock to go down 18 feet. I think there's a level of minutia that we don't need to be involved in so long as they stay within the limit for that project. And I don't view this as an abdication or delegation. I view this as we've entrusted the district staff with a job and with an amount. And, you know, I, do we have to? Now, to clarify, I believe the clarification I received over the weekend was, all of these changes, they still come to us in the form of ratifications on the next board meeting. Is that correct?
That is 100% correct. Every item that goes, that we spend on the bond will come as a certification to the board. Now, in terms of issues, if there's something new, it'll be under this session.
And how would that work financially if the board declines to ratify? It's brought for us not as a pure form of vote, it's as a, you know, if the vote says yeah, no?
So what's the point then in putting it on the agenda here like this? If we're still going to, you know, there's some changes that need to take place?
Oh, because we added new projects under 1E. And then the resolution that was attached to the board, the prior one, went only to 1D. So because now we have a new set of projects, this was an update. So if you compare the two, we added 1E into the new one.
So I think the difference is, and correct me if I'm wrong, the other projects, other expenditures from general fund and that are not from Measure G, you can take that action, that urgency action, you know, fix that pipe over the weekend, and bring it to ratify. But if it's under Measure G, you can't even do that in the first place. You, like, nothing happens until the board approves it, absent this resolution? Do you have authority to do emergency and get ratification later, absent this resolution?
Okay, I'm sorry. That's because we have open contracts, open. Yeah, that is that's because we have open contracts or or open repair contracts. Either, you know, if if we don't do it to our employees, if this happens like Saturday night and I cannot find a plumber, one of my employees, then I have to call somebody. And then because the school has to open on Monday, basically.
But I I guess the the main question is, when it comes to other kinds of projects we always have that are not Measure G, you have the option of taking the emergency request, emergency action, and then bringing it as a ratification. Is it my is it is my understanding correct that you don't have that option under Measure G? And if it's a Measure G dollar, you have to get board approval or this kind of resolution first before you can even make an emergency decision? Is that true or not?
Right, on on the bond, we already know where the project is. So we know it's roofing and then the tank. If everything goes perfectly as planned, then you will only see a few POs coming through and then we'll be done. But then things are going to happen that we're gonna have to hire some some of the people to fix something on the wall, something on the floor because because something happened.
Well, we don't know that.
I'm sorry, Dr. Consio?
We don't know that yet.
Yeah, we do not, but it has happened before. And so the but then that PO will eventually come back and then the description will say the the wall broke and then we had to fix it. But because of, okay, because it's a bond item, it will be full fully disclosed here. Because when we go through an audit, we had to explain every item that we spend on on the bond and how that matches with the bond documents, where it says how we plan to spend those monies.
So it's two two things I just want to add to the discussion. One, I think it's really important that the community know this is a fiscal team that has not had findings in their audit historically in a way that some districts do, right? So I could definitely see this concern had we been a his a district historically that would on a regular basis have findings in our audits, right? That is not this kind of team with Estuardo. He's been doing his work for more than 25 years, has extensive experience. Edith is very good at her craft. So that's one point I just wanted to plug for for confidence sake. The second thing I want to share is that we went through this process last year where he took the community through this 20 million that we were gonna draw down. And at that time, we also had Edith and the team go through, what does the board want to spend the money on? And at that time, you all said, hey, I want to do roofs, I want to do a storage tank. And that is what you told you gave the superintendent direction for her to give the team direction to do. All we're saying is we are now in the process where we are going to do that. Now, many of us own homes and we have to do roofwork. I'm doing roofwork right now on a house. I want to give them the money and do the work. Now, they have come back and said, hey, you also can have the option to do this. I need to be able to say go for it or not because right now I've got water coming through my ceiling, right? And so you have already given the team authority to spend the money on specific things. There's no way they're going to that there is no money to draw down, like you said, another 5 million because you have to go through a process to draw down the 20 million. And so we did go through that process during a board meeting. You've already said spend it on roofs, spend it on the storage tank. So they're just saying, hey, can we get this authority so that when we do have these little nickel and dime things, you don't see $75 and stuff on a on a board meeting waiting for two weeks, right? Again, this is a team that has been trusted for years in the district. So I I would I want to be able to allow them to do their work. I'm not even going to be nickeling, diming them or needing to sign off on really small things. I want Edith and the team and Estuardo, under his leadership, to be able to do the work that you've already approved last year. So that's the only work that's gonna be done here. So that that's that's the the request. Perhaps we could have done a better job at rewording it for clarity. We get that now, we'll do better next time. But that's what I'm asking for, to allow for the authority to entrust the team to move forward on an already approved project.
And it's not it's not questioning integrity or anything like that. I I I'm not saying I don't trust them, I do trust them. But I still think that this is a job of the board to still have oversight on this and to have the authority not to delegate it.
All right, I think we are ready for a vote. Can we get a roll call?
Ms. Free?
No.
Ms. Amesqua?
Yes.
Mrs. Langham Alter?
Yes.
Mr. Rios?
No.
Dr. Vedari?
Yes.
Dr. Consio?
No.
Dr. Brasov?
Yes.
Motion carries for three.
We now move to the consent agenda, items 11 through 19. If you recall, item 18A was pulled at the request of staff. Are there any other requests to pull items? No? Okay. Sorry, Dr. Brasov. Yes, go ahead. That was 18B? Eight, not eight, did I say 18B? I thought I heard A. Oh, yes, I'm sorry, thank you. 18B has been pulled at the request of staff. 18A has not been pulled. 18A is right there. Thank you. And and to just be clear for the community, the goal is not to disregard 18B or the or the idea behind it, but just to try to refine it. But um, anything else? Okay, can I get a motion for those items, for that, the consent agenda?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, I just want to say briefly that, you know, as you go through these contracts, it may seem like, man, it just it's a lot as you add them up. But you kind of go through each one individually and you say, well, which one should, you know, should we not do the science camp? Should we not do the the? Each of these things, it's kind of like grocery shopping. You have the the major monthly bills, right? The mortgage and everything else, and then you still have the you still have to do your target and grocery shopping runs. And that's that's the nature of these contracts. They're maintenance type of things. Literally, one of them is maintaining the heating units for for the cooking, doing the laundry at the high school. So we can't just look at a big number and say, wow, district's spending a lot of money. But we got to do the laundry and we got to make sure the food is hot. And so just as a as a thing to the community, you know, we realize that all together, but there's there's a series of maintenance things we got to do to keep the district running. So that's my only plug. Okay, with that in mind, let's go and do roll call for the consent agenda.
Ms. Free?
Yes.
Ms. Amesqua?
Yes.
Mrs. Langham Alter?
Yes.
Mr. Rios?
Yes.
Dr. Vedari?
Yes.
Dr. Consio?
No.
And Dr. Brasov?
Yes.
Motion carries six one.
Okay. Board of Communication, we'll start with Ms. Langham Alter.
All right, good evening. Thank you for hanging in here. We do have to have these discussions and great points to get brought out. So thank you for your patience. Yes, well, let's see, in the last few weeks since our last board meeting, I got to enjoy a fall concert. It looks like Mr. Craig Jordan took off, but he he was directing that. So was Principal Jenny Bay and VP Kelly Garcia was there. It was a really great concert there in Excelsior with vocals, advanced band, wind ensemble and orchestra. Then I got to enjoy, I think it was a week ago, Friday night, La Marada High School had their homecoming. And wow, the team had a decisive win against Dominguez Hills. That was really fun. And you always feel good when that happens on a homecoming night for all those kids who've been working so hard for that. But out of a court of six, they chose their queen and it was just a nice, seemed like a really good crowd and a fun evening. I had the pleasure on October 19th of being invited by Martha Hargway to the Chapter 404 meeting of CSEA. And it's always neat to talk to a few members there. Also had a chance to talk to the school's first rep and some amazing savings plans. They have a 6% interest. Dr. Maganyu was there as well and a bunch of the members dressed in costume to just kind of lighten it up. So I really appreciated being invited and learning more about what you do with the association. Yeah, Dr. Baker checks in with us weekly. And, you know, it's really handy because inevitably somebody calls you, one or two people during every week and have some opinion they want to tell you about or ask a question. And so that's an opportunity for us to to for me to share with her what what I'm hearing and hear her feedback. So I really appreciate those times. And it's really convenient that they're regularly scheduled. And last but not least, I'm looking forward to meeting with Tama in early, middle of next month and basically doing a listening session with you guys to hear what, you know, what your heart, where your heart is and what your concerns are. So that that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you.
I've been very busy, so I'll start with my report. I attended the La Marada City Council meeting on October 14th. Always a pleasure to get going to those meetings because they're short and sweet. One hour and you're out. I'm not going to say much about our city council meetings here in Norwalk, they're a little longer. Those were just perfect. I wanted to ensure we were there to support our families who have children with Down syndrome, as you were aware and you knew. This month is Down Syndrome Awareness Month. One of the parents, Evelyn Acevedo, who is very active in our community and advocates for special needs, received a proclamation for her outstanding dedication and advocacy to Down syndrome. You you're gonna hear her and you're gonna continue hearing her because she is an advocate and she wants to make sure that we include all students. She's not she's not only advocating for her child Lincoln, but also for all students, like I said. And I want to thank her for everything that she does. I also had the opportunity the same day in the morning to attend the Civic Learning Award of Merit at Norwalk High School. Thank you, Ms. Natalia Valades and Mrs. Kate Wilson for putting that program together. I it's I believe it's the second or third year. First time you got the award, but you've been doing this for the past two years. It was amazing. It was my first time being there and we had special guests. One of the judges was a former student of Norwalk, so it was really nice that they were able to bring her in. And the kids were excited to hear her story, how she became a judge. So it was nice to have her. So thank you so much for inviting us. Let's see what else I have here. On the 17th, I attended the City of Norwalk State of the City. It's always a pleasure seeing so many community leaders and advocates and listen to the accomplishments of our city as well as where we're heading. Then on 10/23, I attended the College and Career Expo, which was last week. Thank you, Dr. Joanne Young for putting it together and as well as her staff that helped her because I'm sure that it was a team effort. We had many colleges and universities that attended as well as our military and trade schools. We had we even had a cosmetology. This is the first time I see it for lashes and you name it. They had a full line of of students there at their booth. There were also workshops such as navigating colleges and universities, financial aid and dual language enrollment. So the families had a lot, a lot of different workshops to attend and and become more aware of what's going on and how they could help and support their students as they're moving into colleges or trade schools. Lastly, and well, not lastly, because I do want to comment that I forgot last meeting that I I have the opportunity and honor to meet with Tama representatives. I missed them last last meeting and I don't want to miss them this time. Robin Morgan from Lantern Elementary and and Marissa Silva from Morrison Elementary. It's really nice to be able to meet with them because you get to listen to their challenges and also their successes of what they're doing in their schools. So I really enjoyed my meet and greet with them. Lastly, I attended the Head Start Preschool Policy Committee meeting on last Friday. I had the opportunity to meet the new PC board and also thank the we were able to thank the board, the ongoing board for their outstanding work. Did I miss something? I think I missed the 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 meeting I had with Special Ed. Where is it? Let me see. Where do I have it? Oh, here it is. See, I have it on my notes. I did attend the the CAC Community Advisory Committee along with Mr. Wood and Ms. Diana Wissar, which was really nice to have her there. And a handful of parents that advocate, you don't know how much they advocate, they advocate. We spent at least two hours there. And they're very devoted to ensuring our students with disabilities are supported. And remember, this committee helps advise and provide feedback to SELPA, which is the Special Education Local Planning Advisory. So it's really nice to see them all get together. And yes, even though it's supposed to be for feedback and and advice, they gave Mr. Wood and Ms. Diana Wissar gave them the opportunity to vent and and speak and about their challenges at their schools. They listen attentively, so I really enjoyed being there because they felt connected, they felt listened to. And that's what they want to they they want to feel that they're listened to. Maybe we're not going to be able to provide them everything that they want at that moment, but just knowing that we're there to listen and listen with a listening ear, that makes a big difference and they're happy. So that concludes my report. I had a great two weeks and I'm hoping that the coming up two weeks, I've been wanting to go to a game. I haven't had a chance. I'm not such a sporty girl, but my goal is to try to make it to at least one. I conclude my report.
Thank you. Free?
Can I not go after a board member, Amesqua?
Fate of receding.
Just kidding. Thank you for that. I was able to attend the Norwalk High School Civic Learning Award Ceremony. It was great to see all the students there, to hear the stories, to hear Cindy Panuco's story of success as well. She's the one that attended at Norwalk High and she's now a judge in LA, appointed by Governor Newsom. Very proud of her. But, you know, thank you, Ms. Valades and Ms. Wilcox, for all the work, hard work that you guys have, Wilson, I'm sorry, for all the hard work that you guys have done with those kids, our students. Thank you. I was able also to attend the Norwalk State of the City address with some of the team here. It was great to hear all the great things that are happening there in our city. And I also had the honor to attend the Southeast Academy First Quarter Cadet Promotion Ceremony, which was great. I was so proud of those cadets who earned the next rank, you know? And it was just such a beautiful morning that day. It was just a great event to attend. And lastly, I attended this past Saturday with Ms. Maganyu, she was there, the migrant education closing ceremony. We had such a great turnout with all the families supporting their students there. So proud of all the work that our staff is doing with those kids and just really building up our our students and, you know, making them leaders in our community. So just want to thank them for all their hard work and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Dr. Vedari?
Good evening. I attended the Garden Hill PTA sponsored Fall Festival. It was toward the end, but I had the opportunity, I enjoyed my conversation with two parents from the PTA. And then I also had a Zoom meeting with two Tama board directors and I listened to their concerns, which I then shared with Dr. Baker during our one-on-one call one or two days later. And I'm looking forward to visiting an elementary school next week with Ms. Maganyu. That concludes my reports.
Thank you. Mr. Rios?
Yes, thank you. When, not in order, I I went to the ceremony for Southeast Academy, the promotion ceremony. That's always a great thing to see their kids and they get empowered and they get enthusiastic about actually keeping and staying with the programs. I think that was great. Another thing that I did and then I thought it was amazing was the senior football game at Southeast John Glenn High School. The participation among both in getting along, seeing the cadets all in uniforms there, cheering and clapping with the cheerleaders and actually, I mean, joining and it was just great. I I got to see quite a few of them and they came up and, you know, were glad and and happy that they actually get a chance to go or felt the right to go to a football game, which was great. I also attended the College and Career, which was great. I want to thank all of our I want to thank all of our staff that was there. A lot of, I think I got to see pretty much all of our principals out there. I want to thank Tama was out there and Ms. Herdick was out there. And it's a great support to see that, you know, they're out there for our kids, a lot of staff and parents who were just getting to see and what, what was great to see is the literal ones, you know, not just in high school, but them getting them ready since early on to see what, you know. So I want to thank everybody for being out there. I know that that's a tough time, everybody who worked it and a great job again, like they have been doing. And so that was good. The State of the City was actually another thing that I attended. It was great. The other thing, I did have my meet and greet with Tama. I thank you for bringing it up and letting us know the concerns and how the district can get more involved with things. And the highlight, though, like I said, was the John Glenn High School and Southeast Academy together. I just can't, I have a video here with the kids all, you know, out there. And it was great to see that, you know, it's coming along. So I just want to wish everybody a safe Halloween and just celebrating. I wasn't able to go to some of the other ones. I was out there supporting my son, which we have our fourth grandchild, so, you know, so. So, you know, I wasn't gonna go to the, but they called me, she's in labor, so we left. Yeah.
Thank you. Dr. Consio?
Yeah, I have nothing to report this evening, but I will be home soon and will have a plethora of things to get to report and attend. So happy Halloween, everyone, and die los muertos.
All right, looking forward to seeing you back. Been a busy couple of weeks in the middle of moving houses within the city. So moving is quite a hassle. The, did get to attend two things, though. The October 23rd College and Career Event at John Glenn High School. Wanted to commend Dr. Jung and her whole team. I know this is not a one-person show. It's, a lot of people had to work together to make it happen. Technology, the Dr. Padilla and hosting and organizing the hosting of it. That doesn't just pop up out of nowhere. And then collecting all of the different participants, right? We had the City of La Mirada talk about careers in local government. We had universities, of course, there was USC and UCLA that had big long lines where at the very end strategically placed at the end, just like the grocery store, you have to walk through the whole thing to get to the milk, right? And then there was faith-based universities, you know, Biola, Hope, Jessup in Sacramento. There was Arizona State. Other kinds of careers, right, cosmetology. Tama was there about careers in education, CSEA. So it was a really well-organized event and really involving every aspect of the community. On the 24th, the next day, I had the privilege of attending the Garden Hill Harvest Festival. I was there with Mr. Staples, it was there, Dr. Vedari. And wow, that is, if you've never been to Garden Hill's annual event, you're missing out. Talking about, what, eight jumpers? And these aren't like, you know, little 10 by 10 jumpers. These are like 20-foot-long jumpers. It's, wow. I think they made quite a bit of money that night and it's very well done. I believe there was even a petting zoo. There was, yeah, 500, 600 parents coming. It's what I felt like, I don't know, maybe give or take. But great opportunity, community involvement, to thank you for the PTA putting it all together and the principal and organizing all that, so it was very well done. But that concludes my report. And with that, we come to the closing. If you recall, we will be closing in memory of Ms. Carolyn Chamberlain and Ms. Margaret Fernandez, retired secretaries in Norwalk High School. And again, having worked with them for years, 16 years with Margaret and a little less with Carolyn since she retired earlier. Wow, what, just precious, very hardworking, dedicated, smile on their face, making you felt welcome, making your needs, you know, providing for, I need this data, Margaret. And she would bend over backwards and make it happen for you. And same with Carolyn, just every need in the front office, you walked in and there was a Carolyn smile. So it is a big loss for the community and for the school. And also, again, our sincere condolences to Chief Warrant Officer, to Dr. Kathy Alvarez, loss of Chief Warrant Officer Bill Wolfe. With that in mind, we will be, can I get a motion to adjourn? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Good night.